Okay, it is 5:15, May 16, 2023. I will call the meeting to order. Jane, you want to do the roll call?
Rudolph?
Present.
Shabon?
Present.
Kroger?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
And Beilenberg has let us know that he will not be able to attend tonight.
Okay. We've all been given an agenda. I don't think there's any changes to that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, second.
Motion by Lindberg by a split second, second by Peterson.
By air.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And any conflicts state of now or along the way when they come up? They're applicable to you, whatever that is to you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. This is made by one motion with a roll call. Under this is the minutes of the May 2, 2023 council meeting. Claims list number 1290 in the amount of $158,918.44. Do you have any questions about any of those larger ones around there?
Stayed out. Appreciate that as always.
Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of April 2023, and the HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report for April 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Kroger, second by Shabon.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have someone from the Harlan Animal Rescue League. Is Tricia here? Is it pronounced your name right?
Refill.
Refill, okay. Do you want to go up to the podium?
Sure.
Can you just state your name?
My name's right here in my little paragraph.
Jane?
I guess I started as, first things first. Hello, my name is Tricia Refill. I'm a mother, going to be grandmother, and an animal lover, especially to dogs. I can tolerate cats. My nose doesn't like them. But I will do absolutely anything to save any kind of animal, whether it be a dog or a cat, in the city limits and the purple raccoons and all that stuff. The animals need our help. There's no way around that. They need our help. The bottom line is, Vicki, the lady behind me right here, started the Harlan Animal Rescue League, which is a nonprofit organization. She has been busting her hind end to take care of our animals in the city of Harlan, outside Harlan, any animal that needs help. She was willing to step in and help them. I personally have helped at the pound, and I'm Vicki's partner. I'm just going to give an example of one night that we could have, you know, got some help from the pound versus ourselves. The police station received a phone call about a dog being abused, and they didn't respond to it. So they contacted me, this lady that had called in, and I in turn went over to her house and picked up that animal. She had gotten it on the way home from work because a man was standing in his driveway kicking the dog, and she stopped and told him after why I was doing that. And he replied, because it's not listening. So she replied, "I will take that dog, so you just stop abusing it." And they let her take the dog. She called me. She can't take it. She's a single parent. So I in return took it out to our animal rescue at approximately 8 o'clock at night, fed it, watered it, put it in the kennel, returned the next day to feed it, water it, let it out, play with the other dogs, do the same thing. A few days later, the dog became very ill. We rushed it to the vet that we use, and it was diagnosed with parvo. Not knowing, us not knowing that, we had put it in with other animals and parvo spreads. In that, we lost at least 25 puppies. Had absolutely no help, just Vicki's help, one or two volunteers, if that. My daughter, who's sitting right beside Vicki, she helped. Now I'm actually going to read from my paragraph. "No one knows how it feels to walk into a rescue to find a deceased puppy or to give Holly or other pups an IV to try to save their lives or to watch your own 13-year-old cry her eyes out, holding a puppy, not knowing if it's going to die or if she's going to come in the next day and find a deceased dog." So we're asking for help. So the bottom, actually, I'm going to show you these pictures. Here's myself. I'm not a nurse by all means, but the vet taught me how to give an IV. I can poke a dog, give an IV, and save a life. Took me all five minutes to do from the vet. Went straight from the clinic and did it myself. Here is my 12-year-old saving Holly's life. This man right here now adopted Holly. And Holly went from looking like this, laying on the floor, dying, to looking like this, just in a matter of time because we care. So standing here today, I'm asking for the city of Harlan and the county. I know the county's not here, but I'm just asking for some help, financial help, land that we can put the rescue on, join the pound and the rescue together and combine as one. To my knowledge, I believe Tim that does the pound is on board with that. I'm not positive, but that's just what I've been told. The other thing I want to say is the dogs that are being neglected and abused, if they can at least be ticketed for animal neglect and abuse. We report that in, and we found that they're not getting ticketed where I know other counties, other cities, ticket people for neglecting their animals. I have a statement from my now 15-year-old, who doesn't like to public speak, and neither do I, but I said I would read it for her. As she wrote this the other night on the computer, it probably only took her about five minutes to write it, to type it, but she was in there for an hour and a half because she couldn't stop crying while doing it. She couldn't see the keyboard. She couldn't see what she was doing. So she took a break and ended up doing it the next day, too. So her speech thing says, "Hello, my name is Andrew Refill. I'm an animal lover. I love animals so much that when I was 13, I held dying puppies in my arms and learned how to put in IVs in dogs. I'm now 15, and I will never forget dreading the mornings, going to the animal rescue, knowing that I'd have to poke an animal and hold the IV needle in just to save its life because somebody couldn't, because someone else was careless or we didn't have the help we needed. Walking into the puppy room to another puppy that may have passed away overnight, it breaks my heart to see these conditions of some of these animals at the rescue or at the pound. Some of them have been starved, some too skinny for running for days on end, can't fight food or shelter, some scared of being abused and neglected. I think if someone is going to own a pet, they should take responsibility to take care of it and love it like it was their own child. That's what I would do. I even had to get into the kennels so dogs could get used to human interaction so they know that they are safe and that they will not be hurt by us. These dogs being abused can't speak, but if they could, they would tell you how faithful they are for the people like Vicki and myself," or she put, "and my mom Tricia, "for not only getting them out of the dangerous situations they were in, "but also getting them the medical attention they need and giving them the physical attention that they need, treating them like their own dog. We need your help to keep this rescue going so we can continue to save the lives of these dogs or cats or whatever animal it may be, whether they will be loved and cared for. I hate seeing the dogs and animals that have been starved, not taken care of, abused, or even worse, left out on the streets to die just because no one cares. So will somebody help us? Thank you. Andrew Refill, the major dog lover." And I do have a few other people here. As you see, my posse, they have a few things to say also, if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll probably have, I don't know, everybody probably won't let everybody speak, but maybe one or two more, probably.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Vicki Coon, and I started the rescue three years ago. I volunteered down at the pound for many years before I started. And in this time, I've helped Tim Miller post his animals, find the owners, find new homes for them. I've taken in cats because the city does not take them in. Today, we had to go in and rescue five cats. From a gentleman that passed away, there was three of us trying to round these cats up. On my way back to the rescue today, there were two dogs running at large. I got a call. I had to come back to Harlan and pick them up. I want to know what the laws are as far as dogs running at large and who's supposed to enforce them. We don't have a police department anymore. So who's supposed to enforce these laws? You know, Holly didn't have vaccinations, so she ended up with parvo. We've had other dogs that have come in with no vaccination. State requirement says we have X amount of days to get them to a vet and get them vaccinated, get them spayed, and get them out for adoption. We've rescued over 450 dogs and cats, not only from the Harlan area, the country, you know, the country out there, but in the surrounding areas as well. Who's going to be there for these 450 next dogs and cats? Because this rescue is closing. I don't have a choice. I have cancer. So someone needs to take it over. So I'm asking the city to do it for me.
My name is Cody Skidmore. I moved here last July from Idaho. Vicki first heard about me through a mutual friend of ours who used to volunteer there. Now she's not able to anymore. Her current job is taking up too much of her time. And when I first arrived there, I saw a couple of dogs that I wanted to go say hi to. And I was warned both by our friend and Vicki that I shouldn't go anywhere near them because they have a reputation for lashing out and biting people due to their heavy abuse. Ignoring these warnings, I jumped right in there and was not bitten, was not harmed in any way. I was met with love and affection and a cry for help, not because Vicki was mistreating them or anything, but because Vicki is so overwhelmed, she cannot give personalized care to each one. Since then, I have been working with her at the shelter, and I have rehabilitated three and am working on number four of her dogs to get ready for adoption. The fact that she's been through all this chaos and unwillingness for the city to help, when there's even a building right across the street up for lease that could suit as a temporary, if not permanent, new location for a shelter for somebody to run, be it the city, be it myself, be it somebody else, is absolutely ludicrous. If the shelter shuts down with nobody to back it up and nobody to take over for it, there are going to be hundreds, if not thousands, of more animals that get abused, neglected, and end up running through the streets that are going to have to be put down. And there's not enough people in this town willing to help out and take that job on. The city will be overrun. We need somebody that can help her out, that can give us a better spot because of a recent incident that I won't get into right now because it still has my blood boiling, that the law enforcement will not handle properly. We just, all we're looking for is a reasonable spot where the dogs can have a little bit of run, whether it be inside or outside, and some proper care. But from what I've been told, every time she's gone looking for a building, no matter where it's at, in or around town, she's been told no for whatever reason. Some of these reasons don't even make sense. They're empty lots sitting that nobody's picked up on for months or years. So why?
Hi, guys. I came just to visit family shelters on my property right now. Rent-free, been there for three years. We, my family, my children, and I helped build it with Vicki. One family has made a difference to let her be on their property and let these animals be saved. Was it easy for us? No. Is it inconvenient? Oh, yeah. But we're one family, and we're doing what we can. We're one family. They've been there for three years. Maybe it's time the city can maybe step up a little bit and help. Let's find some resolutions. It shouldn't have to be on my property. It shouldn't have to be depending on us either. It'd be nice to see some help for them. Vicki has put her heart and soul into it. We helped in the very beginning. We have our own animals. We can't help anymore. We've done as much as we can. So please, think about what one family has done. Think what a city could do for her shelter, especially, you know, let her legacy live on. Do something for her. See what you can do. Because like I said, one family's done a lot. What can a city do?
Anybody have any questions from up here for anybody out there?
I guess I have a question. The Rescue League is a nonprofit, is that correct, organization? Is it a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, they are.
Is it 501(c)(3)?
Yes, she is a nonprofit.
Okay.
She has been from day one.
Does she request, does she do any grant work? Does she do any?
Yes, she's very vigilant. Very vigilant.
Okay. Well, we appreciate the information. I mean, where I sit, I guess, as the mayor, we've just gone through our budget process. So we're pretty much going to pass some things tonight. You know, it's, it always generally comes down to how much money does the city have for streets and parks and, you know, everything else, you know? But, you know, I appreciate the information. I don't know if there's anything we can do at this point as far as land and, I mean, talking about renting a building. We don't have financial means to rent a building for a nonprofit, you know, that type of thing.
I think they're just asking for help. I appreciate for help.
All right. We appreciate you guys coming, so. Thank you.
Can I speak for just one second?
Yeah, maybe a couple more minutes.
Yep. They announced on our Facebook page that we were coming here today to help animals. And recently, we had an animal that was turned over to us that this paw was all swollen, infected, pieces of its face coming off, very, very underweight. I think my daughter, I do have a picture there.
Yes, there's one on my phone that needs reading.
Yeah. Anyway, this animal has been neglected. We had vet statements, two different vets stating that it's been neglected for sure. And the founder of our rescue took this animal in. And it's, we racked up a vet bill of $1,200 over this animal. And I don't know if you guys could see, but Vicki just got handcuffed and arrested for third-degree theft for protecting the animal that nobody else did. The animal has, we let it go. So we washed our hands of it. We just let it go, and they arrested her. They have came out with a search warrant to our Animal Rescue League. The animal is not on our premises. And she just went to jail. The lady is dying of cancer, trying to save these animals. I have never in my life thought this town would come to that. I told every sheriff out there, shame on you. He said, "I'm just doing the job." I said, "Well, maybe you should have did the job of who didn't feed the dog, who didn't post signs, who didn't let the media know their dog was gone, who never came to show proof that the dog has vaccinations." Just unbelievable. So now with Vicki in jail, I just sent my 15-year-old to go let these animals out. I worked nine and a half hours today. And now I'm going to the rescue to go let these dogs out that nobody else will take care of. And not only I'm going out, but my boyfriend's headed that way. Cody said it that way. None of us get paid for that. So if you have a dog at home, think about the ones there that have been abused and neglected. And before I go to the rescue, I'm going home to get $2,000 bond to get her out of jail. Thank you. I don't know if anybody can see that? The body on that dog, that's its face. I don't know if you see that or not.
You had them posted on your page, too, I believe.
Yeah, it's all over our Facebook page, yes.
How do you, how do you notify people who don't have Facebook? I mean, how do they know? If someone lost their dog, how?
If someone lost their dog, the first thing they should do is call the sheriff and say, "My dog's lost." Because we don't have a police station, but.
What if I live two counties away? I'm just asking.
You can call anybody. You can put posters up. I mean, you can put flyers up. I mean, they're all over the place. There's a way of notifying, just like, I pulled in my driveway today and didn't realize that we're doing all this cement work and no clue. No clue. I'm like, holy moly. The first thing I do is put it on my Facebook. If I would have known, I might have been a little prepared. Like, I didn't know my street was going to be closed. I didn't know my driveway's going to, you know, the cement all tore up, my grass. I had no clue. There's a way to get word out. I don't know why the city didn't let us know. As I seen, there was a sign out here, but on the right here. So, but you could put flyers in Higbee, Fairway.
All takes time, right?
Yeah. I mean, dedication. Andrea's put cement benches at the dog park. She donated those slabs that are over here for the dog park. She also put a donation bin and earned her gold award for Girl Scouts. There's a, out of Higbee. If the last one closes, she has no idea what she's going to do with that donation bin. No clue. But there was a few nice men that helped and donated their time and effort to move it. I have a couple of them in from this town. My father had a hole in his pickup, but, you know, just me. And as far as I know, Tim was going to be here, I was told. But he's got to be level with everybody, and hard to speak is peace. He wants to join forces. So that's what we're asking.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Moving on to other business, to receive and file the 2022-2023 fiscal year audit. Do we, I don't know, we've talked about that a time or two? Anything else we need to discuss? Jane, Jean, counsel? I guess that's the audit from Brad Sand, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody have a chance to look that?
This is, um, the process.
Is there a motion to?
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shabon.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item B is Resolution 2530, amending the 2022-2023 annual budget by adopting Budget Amendment Number 1.
Not sure if anyone had any questions in regards to the amendment, the process, the spreadsheets with the breakdown of revenues and expenses. You know, when we do this budget process, you know, anywhere from 12 to 18 months prior to the year, we don't always know if some projects are coming up or a grant was going to be applied for. So that's when we amend the budget to cover things like that, if there's increased revenues coming in or increased expenses going out. And it's an opportunity to let the public know that we are either bringing more money in or we're spending more money. I tried to get as detailed as possible on this.
Do an excellent job on that.
Thank you.
Short explanation with mine item by item.
Thank you. You know, there was lightning damage at the activity center. We don't anticipate that when we work on the budget. There's fire truck repairs, you know, above and beyond what we budget for. Furnace repairs at vets, just things that come up.
Excellent.
So anyway, I'd sure be happy to answer any questions. As far as, you know, revenues, we had some grants, you know, come in that we weren't, you know, that we were awarded through USDA that we either didn't think that would come this year or it came and it wasn't budgeted for because it was something that happened after our budget process. So that's, that money's, you know, being accounted for. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, Jean, did you want to add anything?
No. Yes, I will add something. As published, which again, our last meeting is when we indicated that this amendment would be happening. Again, it was published and it was in your packet. So I just pulled it up on the screen. And we direct the public as well as want a short summary of this that explains it's on the bottom, you know, this is what gets filed with the state. It's what has a public notice. And it's difficult to cover all that in a sentence or two, as you see here. But Jane just noted, you know, the 12 to 18 months in advance. A lot of this is timing of projects. So we look at things like a vet's facade project is based upon there's going to be some expenses before the end of the fiscal year. The USDA, our street improvement project, some of those expenses are happening now before, instead of after July 1. Fuel was another one, right? We could predict fuel prices in many of our departments. We were not trending with our previous, you know, five-year trends that we look at with our budget process. So, and then the last one was insurance. And we all, with our insurance renewals, as well as our insurance meeting, I believe our agent, and if you read industry publications in the Midwest and certainly Iowa, the rates have gone up because of significant weather events. And we were impacted by that, too. So another contributing factor. I would direct individuals in the public to certainly look at the public notice, what gets filed, and in our diligence and, you know, being very precise as well as transparent. That's all I have to add.
I would like to also note that if it was budgeted for next year, like the vets, we will amend it next year to take that off.
But we got a role starting it next year.
So we've already, you know, we've already got some amendments to do for next year's budget, which hasn't even started yet, so.
Jane, is there a motion, Resolution 2530?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your explanations and your emails and detail. It makes it a lot easier.
I think this is kind of the same thing coming up. The next one, Resolution 2531, approving the unbudgeted transfers stated in the fiscal year 2223, Amendment Number 1.
So we do a budgeted transfer resolution, which we've done in a previous meeting. These are unbudgeted transfers because of the amendment process, and they're noted in here in the expense and revenue area. This one pertains to COVID CARES money that's dedicated to the airport. That money is being transferred out of the CARES fund and into our general fund. That money is being transferred out of the CARES fund and into our general fund because that's how you have to transfer it. And then from there, it's going into our 810 capital savings. So it can't go directly from a project account to the 810. It's got to go through a flow for the auditors to follow. And so that's what is explained here, that $30,000 is that CARES money that will be transferred into the 810 capital account for the airport. It's used to pay 10% of our 9010 projects or 20% of our 8020 projects. And so that money is utilized in that way, so.
Jane, is there a motion for Resolution 2531?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then Resolution 2532, authorizing the submission of application for general aviation vertical infrastructure, GAVI program, certifying eligibility requirements to install the new powered doors for the existing hangar number three.
I'd be happy to comment on that if you'd like.
Is it a 9010?
After that multiple. We applied, this is state funding and state available funds towards airport improvement projects as stated in our CIP, our capital improvement plan. This same hangar, as well as application was submitted last year, we were not funded. And as Jane just commented on, as far as supporting our capital savings, as we've done for other departments, airport being the same, our local match on this would be, as was, up to $150,000, and 85% of that would be state, 15% local. So things like with our annual budgeting, as well as COVID money allocated for your capital savings would support our local match. Hangar six was done three and four years ago respectively with the powered doors, really makes a huge improvement on the grounds and to the buildings out there. This would mirror that. Airport Commission did review and approve this this morning, needs final approval with the resolution to get this submitted this week. Sharon, anything you'd like to add? You've been involved with that.
No, I just understand on this particular hangar, you can't, you can only have one set of doors open at a time.
Oh, yes.
Or we have problems. So, anyway, it's a process.
Jane, is there a motion for Resolution 2532?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shabon.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item E is Ordinance 2023-03, amending Chapter 155 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Harlan pertaining to adoption of construction and maintenance codes. This is the first reading of this one.
A quick recap on that, that our previous version was 2012. It's very standard that, based upon international code, very similar to the state, that you're a version or two behind as they work out the bugs in new code releases. This would be bringing up to 2018 version. The only change is removing electrical, as we no longer do electrical inspections, electrical oversight that's been done the past few years now at the state level, the state inspection. And this was simply bringing up the 2018 version. And the last caveat or note to this is that it would also pave the way then for implementing a rental inspection program with a provider system. They've also recommended we get up to the 2018 version. So that's the background, and we would have two more readings. And Roger Beeson and I reviewed this, as well as Ron and Biscuit Hill as well.
Is this something we need to have, three readings then?
Yes. I would recommend, for my chair, at least one more reading before you dispense at the third, in the event there's any public input.
Jane?
Contractors or time for any questions?
All right. Motion for 2023-03?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is discussion, discuss moving the meeting on the 4th of July to the 5th of July due to a federal holiday.
Is it Tuesday to Wednesday?
Yeah.
For example, I think we kind of already...
Yep.
I think most of you were able to switch to that date. I just would like it to be formal.
Unless we want to hear the official fireworks on the floor. Mayor, make that motion.
Jane?
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabon?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
And we'll probably mention that again at the next meetings, yeah. Just to remind the public so that they're aware.
Might have to remind me, too.
Yeah, might involve a long weekend for some folks. Next up, the city administrators' report.
Provide a couple of updates and happenings as well as planning. As was commented that by Tricia, that the street work with our 2023 project is well underway. Nicer weather last week has really seen an uptick in activity. We have posted that to Facebook. We certainly can do so again. The first phase, once again, is curb and gutter, based upon the plans and specs. If you've been, so offered a little bit of show and tell at the start of the meeting today, or in terms of the start of my report. And so this example, again, which was in the plans, this is along Willow Street where you can see the curb and gutter has been, that's the new pour. So then, once we're ready for the mill and overlay, the mill will come down between the gutter line and the other side, get it milled up and repave it. So there's an example, this was just yesterday, they got, excuse me, yesterday. This is going up Onyx. Again, the whole west side of Onyx was pretty much non-existent on curb. So there's an example how that area looks. And then, as is a requirement with any of the USDA and federal funding, that is a requirement that all crosswalks become ADA compliant in terms of slope as well as the ADA pads. And a couple of examples of how that's coming into full compliance in terms of accessibility. That's again happening at each area along the project where it doesn't exist today. There's some areas already have this, yet again, going up Baldwin, Willow and Durant. This will be much more accessible. And again, compared to many of our peers, we do pretty well with this, but this will, you know, I would say moves us up the bar in terms of accessibility. If you were by 12th and Willow today, down at the bottom, right at 12th and Willow, significant work going on there today in terms of the corner and getting new crosswalks in there, dealing with some storm sewer. So just ask for the public's patience with this first phase. Take heed of the cones and signs, and we can repost something to Facebook as well. The three primaries being Baldwin, Durant and Willow. And Willow is getting close to complete. On the topic of streets, soon after the new Milk and Honey Open at the new location, we've had a request from that property owner to consider some additional accessibility in terms of handicap parking. So we'll be working with our Streets Committee with Richard, Kyle and Gina. So in the next few weeks, want to set up a Streets Committee meeting to consider and evaluate that, you know, where that may be recommended, should, you know, and if so, require full council approval. Not unheard of, I mean, there's been other requests over time for specific spot areas for additional handicap parking. We'll discuss that in more detail, but we'll be setting up a Streets meeting to review that. Speaking of airports, a lot of construction activity has continued out there. The taxi lane project, for the most part, is done, the final seating grading and striping was done in the last week. There is some fine tuning, as there are with a lot of construction projects, in terms of making sure that the concrete and rocks are adequately removed and picked up and stakes. So, we were talking this morning, the commission meeting, that first 95% of the project seems to go pretty quick and goes pretty well, and it just always seems like that last 5%, right? I see Joey maybe nodding his head to get, and this could be on a personal project or a public project, it's just that last little, well, to get things final and tidied up always seems to be a challenge there. Things have continued well out at the airport. JJ, once again, is well underway with activities. I know the first high school baseball games last night there, so at the high school level. And I believe that was still going on at 9:30, 9:45 last night, got pretty cool with the baseball games.
The fields look really nice down there.
What's that?
And the whole complex looks really nice down there.
Continued looking real nice.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, appreciate the, and summer, with the JJ summer help, they're fully underway now, just as of the last week, so that helps out some relief on the rest of the parks staff. Really great assistance there. And then soon to be, the pool is now full. Chemicals, I think, have been added. Working on being sure heater, the heater fires up. And I know this from being a 20-year private pool owner, that every spring it seems to be one or two things, being on a private pool or large public pool, that getting through the long winter's rest and either between maybe pumps or heaters and other things, but not aware of any leaks, and that's always a great thing. So I would, mentioning that. Guard training was last Wednesday, and as a standard with, there were 16 or 17 at the initial guard training. And I know there's 10 or 15 more apps that, which will go through a second training prior to opening. So staffing looks very solid at the pool this year. And lastly, we have with, May being a five Tuesday month, that means we as a, you as a governing body, won't reconvene again for a two-week layoff here, a three-week layoff, and will reconvene then on Tuesday, June 6th. Again, slipping in a Streets meeting, and I'm sure some other updates and committee meetings going on, but just a reminder, we won't convene again for three weeks. Questions, comments, or concerns you've got for me?
When is the pool slated to open? Is it after Memorial or?
Sunday, the...
28th, I believe.
Sunday, the 28th. That first weekend after school is out next week. Yes, I think the last day of school is next Tuesday or?
Monday.
Next Monday? Something, the following Sunday is when it's open.
I see freshly equipped with the new freezer and fridge.
Yep.
Good deal. They sell concessions and stuff down there, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Pool or JJ?
It's a pool.
Why?
That's right. I mean, I knew that, yeah, I just, yeah.
It's nice to hear that we're staffed.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Yeah, so some, you know, with the... Shortage there.
Changes made with compensation last year, again, a slight bump in base, 850, and then the incentive tiers in terms of additional 50 cents an hour and our additional dollar an hour, once you meet those hour thresholds, to get some strong, solid, I won't say output, but coverage and staffing at the pool. That seemed to help last year as well. And good nucleus or core returning, that always helps. That's all I have to add here.
Anything else for Jean? I just always make the comment about downtown, being somebody who lives there, works there, I think it's a great problem we have is parking downtown, because it's, it was a busy place all weekend long down there. And it was busy not just because they're coming to look at the trees and the buildings, it's, there are people that are, you know, participating in businesses downtown, I mean, all the way around the square. But there's the new additions that, I think, five, six, seven, eight years ago, you know, it was, we were desperate to find somebody at the storefronts and those kinds of things. And it's, it's nice to see, but it's hard to find a place to park sometimes on a Saturday morning downtown Harlan. So it's a great thing, so. Thanks, Jean. I don't really have anything under my report. I mean, I don't want to, a very passionate group tonight that came, talked to us. I think we listened, we're going to ignore that group, but I understand, but I guess I understand where we sit. As a city, it's hard to divert funds to help, but I do think it's something that, you know, I don't know where they would go next, Jean. Do they need to come to another group to talk, I guess? But, I mean, we're through our budget process, I don't think there's anything we're going to be able to do, but, you know, they want to come talk to us, you know, the difference. What committee, I mean, I don't know, where would they even start if they came to visit again for a, what committee that falls under?
That could be, if so directed, if they want to convene a group.
I guess up to you guys to decide, I guess, but I don't mean to ignore them, they all left, so I didn't really need to respond to them, but I think we all understand, but it's a hard thing, right, to do.
Well, it's not a lack of caring.
No, no. No, I think we all care. It's just, we've provided a service, we still provide a service, correct, through law enforcement.
A different service, right?
Yes, so nothing's really changed, other than...
The city provides, the city staffs and runs a pound. And a pound is not the same as a shelter or rescue. And again, to Sharon's point, it's not due to lack of caring, yet it is, you know, providing a temporary place for dogs that are non-compliant, if you will. We generally don't have a large census, actually, it's a pretty small census. Prior to Vicki's group and the 501(c)(3) for years, it was a four poz organization, really blessed with great volunteer groups. And as I look around the table, but also Totod is an organization that relies a lot on volunteers. Volunteers have gone down, regardless of, be it with animals or other volunteer groups. So that's a, it's a challenge everywhere, not just for animals. So that's an additional backdrop or state of what, from a public perspective, which you're in the elected role, as I look at from the administration staff role, we operate a pound very similar to communities our size, and others don't, unless they're required to, don't offer that service. Could everyone benefit from more staffing? And, you know, with changes, with the transition from police department with sheriff, I mean, we're still working on that on animal calls. We don't get a tremendous amount of them as far as who's first to respond. We'll continue to improve that. Yet we don't have someone staffed, be it, we don't have an animal control person 24/7 hours of keeping it. But we have individuals that wear five or six hats that help with animal control.
Do we know, like, City of Atlantic, or, I mean, Dennison, and then do, do, I mean, is anybody? Chief is a former police officer in Atlantic. What does the City of Atlantic do? I mean, is it just a pound as well?
Yeah. They, they had, when I was down there, they had, I think, maybe kind of like a Tim Miller, who, you know, if you, if you needed during the daytime, if you needed a dog caught, he would try and come out. But he wasn't a professional dog catcher either, so, you know, we had one dog that was very elusive, and nobody could ever catch him, and he just kept running, so.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, because I mean, obviously, the City of Harlan and Shelby County cannot be the only areas with, I mean...
We're very similar.
Yeah, I mean, people who buy pets, I mean, it's a responsibility thing.
Volunteers or other, if other cities do or towns do have a shelter or a rescue, others don't, I mean, we're...
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, that's definitely not from a lack of caring, I mean...
So I guess that'd be a plea for the public and others, and I believe that there've been many requests out on Facebook and social media from the rescue, that they're always looking for volunteers, donations. So this would be a request and kind of message to the entire public is to, you know, you either... through them or if they want, if there's other groups that want to, if they've talked about closing, if want to step up and come meet with the city or elected group, certainly contact me and I'd be happy to sit down and talk about what it could look like with other resources once they close or even supporting them. Certainly help, try to be a hub or, and we've sat down with them, some of you have been involved, I believe, in the past few years, talking about opportunities and or challenges. Unfortunately, unfortunate scottin' of this, yeah, as I look at it.
Change? Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Todd Moline.
Good evening. Sorry for being a little late, but it was for a really good reason because we are hosting the Southwest Iowa Civil Air Patrol Cadets and their new program out of our place. So tonight was the first night you came and we were running around trying to get it set up for them so they could do their program. So happy to have them out there. This is also the last week of our Kickstart the Leader Review Program. And so all reports I'm getting is it's gone really well. All the students that have been participating have really enjoyed it, feel it's well worth, you know, the time and the cost to be a part of the program. And Orlando Gill from TCTS Global, who's our instructor, is so excited about how this one's gone. He's already started spending some money on the fall to figure out how we can do one there too. So looking forward to that. Friday is our golf tournament, so if you want to come out, we could use a couple more teams. If you want to throw one together, if you just want to come out and enjoy, you know, a great day out on the golf course, come on out. Where we do it is people start to check in about 4:00, 4:30, 5:15, we have a putting contest and then we try to get everybody off by 5:30. We don't have a light meal afterwards and give out some prizes, so.
Is that the country club?
That's it, we had the country clubs this year, yeah. Last year we had it out as a north course and we're alternating year to year. From our board meeting today, one of the things that we reviewed was in terms of our board members, so we will be reaching out to a few business people in the Shelby County area to see if they have an interest in possibly being on our ballot for board members. That'll take place in June. May 24th at 6 o'clock, we have a new business down in Elkhorn. It's called Love You More. It's a women's clothing store. They've got children's toys, a lot of different things. So we're going to have a ribbon cutting for them at 6 o'clock, welcome them. And they're, they had a soft launch this past weekend and they're looking for, you know, to throw the doors open for Tidley Fest and get to business. So it'll be good. And then one final reminder, Saturday, if you're going out and going grocery shopping in Fairway or Hy-Vee, remember the Cub Scouts are doing their fill the canoe program to help West Central Community Action. So grab a couple of extra cans or something and drop it in the canoe as you're going by. And that's it for the chamber.
Thanks, Todd.
I'll just add that the Make My Move presentation from last meeting, Ryan Pike with Make My Move, Todd had just gotten the slides. A few of you required about getting a copy of the slides, information presented. I'll get that out to you because Todd had just gotten that in the past day or two. And then specific to that and Todd is, or the chamber is looking at that with their board and sooner rather than later, how among other organizations as well as through Todd's organization, if we're going to act on that Make My Move opportunity as a, supporting our people attraction and development, how that might look in the next, what, 60 to 120?
We'll get it wrapped. I would, if we're going to do it, I want to have it in place for fiscal year 25th, so. And remember, there's kind of two sides to it. One is the actual cost to participate, but then the other side is what type of incentives as a community can we put together and, you know, and can partner with us to help with those incentives too? So as people come into the community, we can kind of just, you know, take them by the hand and make sure they get introduced and make sure they get involved and hopefully volunteer, so.
Welcome dinner with the mayor.
Welcome dinner with the mayor, sounds like saying.
It's great.
Anything you want off the.
The door to the shops.
Purple door menu. There we go, me and a garden. All right.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
HMO, Mr. Rishon.
Hello, everyone. Several items. At our board meeting last Thursday, we did approve McCarthy Trenching's bid for our water project. And with that, our next in-person meeting will be June, June 8th, sorry about that. And then we'll hopefully approve the contracts from McCarthy Trenching. So they're working on getting their contracts together, their performance payment bonds and their certificate of insurance. So we should have that by our June 8th meeting and be able to get our attorney to review it, USDA to review it since they're funding agency. And we should be good to go by our June 8th meeting. Talking with the contractor, he is looking at getting started after the 4th of July. And there again, we've got a completion date of September of 24th, so we have kind of there again, a longer construction period to try to help with, you know, be there, we get the equipment and so forth, you know, give them more time for that. So that's kind of how we, why we lengthen up that construction period. I had mentioned last meeting, you know, we had eight wells that we maintained, did some maintenance on to try to get additional flow. We did get that final report. We gained 140 gallons per minute at the water plant, which is good. I mean, I guess we'd like to see more, but basically that helps us as far as trying to hopefully stay out of water conservation. And with our new budget coming July 1st, we do have funds in that budget also to try to, try to look at maintaining maybe another half a dozen wells, you know, come after July 1st, try to stay after that, try to keep, keep flow to the plant. Just an update, I guess, on the scooters. We had the base for the transformer set here a week or so ago and last week they actually set the transformer, so that's ready for power once they need that to be hooked up at the scooters. We will be waiting though on the water service until you kind of get the plumbing set for the building and the area to final grade for the building. And then also on that same note, the Dollar General, we're looking at boring the water and electric service and a kind of doing for telecom probably within the next couple weeks as they progress on that site. And then once they get the building installed, which I think that's going to happen fairly quickly, poured the floor yesterday, I think, but then we would come in and put the gas service in for that once they get the building. Takes me along on that. Any questions, concerns for me?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Comments from the public? Up here, around the table?
Bike and car nights coming up.
Oh, that's right. Thursday nights, first Thursday.
Everybody gets kicked off in three weeks.
The old man's nice tone, we'll have a great night, I'm sure. Okay. If nothing else, being adjourned.